To speak during the council meeting, you can sign up at the podium.
Is this radio on?
I'm just doing the ministry.
Dolores Sharp.
Is she doing the book?
Yeah, Justin's talking.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Wednesday, October 8th, 2025 council meeting.
We'll now have our invocation by Minister Dolores Sharp. She's the Chaplain and President of the First District Philadelphia, PA. Minister Sharp?
She's coming up.
Where everybody please stand.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The word of God says in First Timothy that we should always pray, that we should pray for those who in position of leadership and power, that they should be able to make the right decisions. So Father God, right now, we come to you with prayer for the leaders and all of those in authority. Grant them the wisdom, grant them the discernment to govern themselves wisely and justly as if they would, as they are leading for humanity. Give them integrity to serve all people and to seek the common good over all personal gain. Direct them and keep them, each and every one of them, as only you can. Give them the wisdom above all to come together as one that could benefit all of the people, all of the people, no matter race, denomination, but to govern for humanity's sake. So we thank you today as we go forth and grant them peace, justice, and promote, to promote the peace of all and for all of the people in this city, this state. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 That's allegiance to the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Minister Sharp, thank you so much for that lovely prayer and support of us, the leadership and the community. We receive that prayer and we're humbled by your thoughts and words. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk will have roll call.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Present.
Davis.
Present.
Deputy Mayor West.
Present. I'd like to get an approval for the minutes of the September 24th, 25th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes. Now we'd like to have public comment on agenda items only, on agenda items only. Hearing none. We can, is there any old business? New business?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. So for some new business, on October 20th, we'll be having a Budget Committee meeting that will be scheduled for 1 o'clock. That's October 20th. That's a Monday, as well as I want to encourage everybody and remind everybody that we're still accepting applications for the Hometown Heroes Program. That will be, we have the banners hanging right up in the community. And we just want to encourage families to support our veterans and support that program. As we have another large order going in this Friday, I'm really excited about that. But I just wanted to remind everybody that program is still going on, and we're looking forward to still supporting our veterans and everyone in our community. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Bill number four in ordinance, in ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, enacting new Article 513 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, as supplemented and amended entitled Traffic Calming Measures to establish criteria and guidelines for the installation of traffic calming measures on city-owned roadways specifically designed to reduce the speed, but not necessarily the volume of motor vehicle traffic in residential areas, nor is the purpose to move traffic to adjoining roadways and to enact enforcement and education activities by the Chester Police Department in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments on this? We did have a meeting on the traffic calming. There was a presentation made last week by the Public Works Director, and we had implemented a few changes, but everyone is now in agreement with it. So, Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor, I just want to make note that you all are getting ready to pass just the first reading.
Right.
Of bill.
Right.
Okay, of the bill. Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the following individual has requested a handicap parking zone, Joshua Whitaker, 813 Pusey Street, Chester, PA, 1903. And whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined the aforementioned individual has met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the 800 block of Pusey Street in the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Chester Bureau of Fire is in receipt of a grant from Delaware County Interactive Gaming Revenue Authority, known as the SIGRA, and whereas the the SIGRA receives local share funds pursuant to 4 PA CSA Section 13B 53 to utilize the funds to provide grants for economic development, municipal police, and emergency services, and other purposes for public interest. And whereas the SIGRA awarded the Bureau of Fire $2,523. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve acceptance of a grant in the amount of $2,523 from the Delaware County Interactive Gaming Revenue Authority grant for the purchase of smoke detectors by the Bureau of Fire.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas pursuant to Act 93 of 2008, 35 PS Section 7504.0, the City of Chester Bureau of Fire is authorized to contract with or make grants to near or adjacent municipal corporations or volunteer fire companies therein for fire protection in their respective municipalities. And whereas Township of Logan Fire Department, Gloucester County, New Jersey, is responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of its residents and desires to enter into a mutual aid and assistance agreement for shared political jurisdiction boundaries. And whereas each party entering into this agreement recognizes many emergencies transcend political jurisdictional boundaries and that the intergovernmental coordination is essential in managing these and other emergencies under this agreement. Each party further recognizes that there will be emergencies which require immediate access and procedures to apply outside resources to make a prompt and effective response to such an emergency. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby accept a mutual aid and assistance agreement between the City of Chester Bureau of Fire and the Logan Township Fire Department to provide the necessary apparatus and manpower to assist with fire emergency operations and first aid services upon request. Further, it does hereby authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement for and on behalf of the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions or comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Resolution, resolved, the City of Chester, known as City, does hereby adopt the resolutions set forth below and certifies that such resolutions are in accordance and conformity with the depositor's governing documents and all agreements with third parties and all laws applicable to the depositor. Resolved, the Santander Bank NA, known as the Bank B, and hereby is, has designated a depository for the funds of the city subject to the terms and conditions of the Business Deposit Account Agreement for one account with authority to accept at any time for the credit of the city's deposits and checking, saving, money market savings, term, or any other account by whomsoever made in whatever manner endorsed. And resolved that the bank shall not be liable in connection with the collection of such items that are handled by the bank without negligence, and the bank shall not be liable for the acts of its agents, subagents, or for any other casualty. And we've resolved that the city assumes full responsibility for and shall indemnify the bank against all losses, liabilities, and claims resulting from payments, withdrawals, or orders made or purported to be made in accordance with or from actions taken in good faith and in reliance upon these resolutions. And resolved that the Bank B, and hereby is authorized and directed to certify, pay, or otherwise honor all checks, drafts, notes, bills of exchanges, acceptances, undertakings, and other instruments or orders for the payment, transfer, or withdrawal of money for whatever purpose and to whomsoever payable when such instruments and orders are properly made, signed, or endorsed by the signature, the actual or purported facility signature, or the oral direction of any of the authorized signers below. Provided however, that any check, draft, note, bill of exchange, acceptance, undertaking, or other instrument for the payment, transfer, or withdrawal must bear the actual or purported facility signature of any of the authorized signers below. And resolved that any authorized signer acting alone be, and hereby is authorized on behalf of the city to endorse, negotiate, and collect any and all checks, drafts, notes, bills of exchange, acceptances, undertakings, and other instruments, and to open and close and update information on any account of the city at the bank. And resolved that any of the authorized signers below acting alone be, and hereby is authorized on behalf of the city to instruct orally or by such other means as the bank may make available to City, that bank to initiate the transfer of funds by wire, telex, automated clearinghouse, book, entry, compute, or such other means, and to execute agreements with the bank for the transfer of funds from any of the city's accounts and to delegate from time to time to other persons the authority to initiate the transfer of funds from any such account. And resolved that any authorized signer acting alone be, and hereby is authorized on behalf of the city to enter into a written lease for the purpose of renting, maintaining, and accessing a safe deposit box, and any authorized signer is authorized to terminate the lease. And resolved that the bank may rely on any signature, endorsement, or order and any facility signature or oral instruction reasonably believed by the bank to be made by an authorized signer, and the bank may act on any direction of an authorized signer without inquiry and without regard to the application of the proceeds thereof, provided that the bank acts in good faith. And resolved, the bank may rely on this document and on any certificate by an authorized representative of the city as to the names and signatures of the authorized signers of the city until the bank has actually received written notice of a change and has had a reasonable period of time to act on such notice. And resolved that the city agrees to notify the bank promptly and in writing of any change in A, these resolutions, B, the identity of persons authorized to sign, endorse, or otherwise authorize payments, transfers, or withdrawals, C, ownership of the city or the city's legal structure or status, including the city's dissolution or bankruptcy. And resolved that any other following person or persons from time to time holding offices of the city be and are hereby or designated as the authorized signers to act on behalf of the city in accordance with the above resolutions. Richard Troutman, Chief Financial Officer, Eleonora Gosin, City Treasurer, Joy Taylor, City Controller. Resolved that there are no other persons currently designated as authorized signers on behalf of the city. The city is controlled by a governing body. Each individual executing this document certifies and warrants that she or he is duly authorized to act on behalf of the city in all matters pertaining to its rights, responsibilities, and activities in connection with the foregoing, including but not limited to executing this document on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to give the brief comment that that was a lot of information, a lot of reading. But it was just simply put, we're just making sure the right signers from the finance department are on each account. So if you go back from previous council meetings, these same three individuals are on majority of our accounts to oversee the money that's going on with the city. So that long drawn out formation, we're just letting people know that these are the individuals that'll be in control of that account.
And just one more note that on Monday, the 6th of October, after our deliberative, we did have an executive session not to make any decisions, but to make sure that we were all clear on the resolutions and ordinances that were presented today. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes. At this time, do we have any reports coming from our directors of the various departments? Commissioner Shirley.
Deputy Mayor, Council, thank you. Nothing to report, just wanted to remind everyone that this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00, we're going to have the open house at the fire station on 14th Street. We're going to have all the fire trucks out, we're going to have displays, educational material for fire prevention. It is Fire Prevention Week, and there's going to be some food and some games for the kids. So just come on out, it'll be a great day of meeting your firefighters, learning about fire safety, and getting to have some fun. So, this Saturday, 1:00 to 4:00 on 14th Street Firehouse. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any more reports from any of the other directors? We're now going to have a presentation by the Block Captain Committee.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the Block Captain Program had our citywide cleanup on the 27th. I wanted to thank all of Council, I saw all of you.
It's me. You want to give your name?
Oh, I'm Haley Gerina. I'm on the Block Captain Program Committee. So I wanted to thank all of Council for coming out. I saw all of you guys that day. We had over 200 volunteers spread out across 12 locations throughout Chester all at once. So it was very, very cool to see the community come together in their own neighborhoods. There is a visible difference if you kind of drive through those areas. We'll be kind of filling in those spaces as we go throughout the rest of the year. But it really was an excellent turnout. We had another 100 or so people at the celebration afterwards where we handed out a couple of awards. I wanted to thank our sponsors again, and our block captain, our block captains who held down all of the sites across the city. We had a couple of city staff as well. One of our challenges was that we couldn't find some folks to cover some of our sites because they were working on their own streets. So what a wonderful problem to have. But it was really cool to see everyone come together of all ages, just really coming together to beautify the city. So we did put together a quick little video highlighting the event for you guys to see. Yay!
Let's have a big hand for the Block Captain. Thank you so much.
For sure. So if anyone is interested in joining the Block Captain Program or seeing what we've got going on, we are transitioning for at least the colder months to virtual meetings. We'll be posting the link on our Facebook page. They're always the 3rd Thursday of every month, so you can listen in just to see what's going on with us. If you're interested in becoming a Block Captain, please join us, apply, get connected with us however you see fit. But we'd love to continue seeing this going and keeping the city clean. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, Haley. To you and Michael and others on your committee, thank you for all of your hard work. And it was a successful program. We had fun, you know, but we worked hard too, you know. So Whittner University was a big part of it. They were at 21st and Edgemont Avenue, I think, and also at the park. So I just want to thank everyone for your support. And as a community, when we see the Block Captains out, you know, trying to clean up and do other things in the community, I'm going to ask that we get out there with them and support them. Thank you.
I do have a question, Haley. You said that they will be, the meetings will now be virtual?
Yes.
Is there a link that the community members can go to?
Yeah, we'll put, it hasn't, we haven't shared it yet, but it will be posted on our Facebook page, and then I'm sure the city can take it as well and get it on the city's Facebook as well. I'm not sure if you guys can do anything on your website or on the Block Captain page on the website, but I'll put that in your hands.
So what is the Facebook link?
It's Chester City Block Captains.
Okay.
Block Captain Program. Yeah. So, oh, Justin's on it.
Right, he's on it.
But yeah, that's a great, that's the best place honestly to find all of our events, all of our meeting reminders, that sort of thing. We'll be sending out to, like, we've got an email list going now, so we'll be sending out emails with information. So very, very excited to get the information in front of people, but that's the best place to find us right now.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Haley.
Are there any other presentations? Now we're ready for public comment. And our first person will be Riquetta Robinson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm back again. Y'all had the citywide caywalk, right?
Mm-hmm, cleanup.
It came, right, it came down Morton Avenue. I don't know if y'all contracted out for somebody to cut that grass that fell right across the street from me. They did not clean it up. All they did was just cut the grass and left it. And it looks a mess on Morton Avenue. I don't know if y'all could still get in contact with whoever owned that lot across the street. Grass is so high, you can't even see over there on Chestnut Street.
What's the intersection there, Morton and what?
Between 10th and 11th.
And it's right, the property is right on Morton Avenue?
Yes, right across in the 1000 block. And you have people coming to go to Casino and Soccer Stadium, they come right through that way. They get on 291. And another thing, that light that's there on the corner of Chestnut Street, we can't even hardly get across the street. Once that light changed from 9th Street going to Walmart, I mean, they speed. They don't even recognize them signs.
So the light is where and what intersection?
On Chestnut Street.
On Chestnut.
And sometimes it'd be kids out there playing, and one neighbor, she can't even let her kids stay outside. Once that light changed, we done had two accidents where two cars was hit it right in front of Jeffrey Square, on the sidewalk.
So what we might have to do is have someone from Signal Services come out and look at it, you know, how, you know, look at the activity as far as the light, you know, is concerned. Is it giving people enough time, cars enough time to get through and what have you? Is it, is it giving people enough time, cars enough time to get through and what have you? So we'll have that checked by Signal Services.
Thanks.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. And also, um, the property right there at, um, in the ten hundred block or, yeah, of, uh, Morton Avenue, um, we'll have Mrs. Watson look at that from LNI. That's a license seeing and inspections issue, okay, but thank you. Um, the next person is Mr. Joseph Morse. State your name and address, please.
Deputy Mayor, Council, good morning.
Good morning.
I am Joseph Morse, Jr., twenty-five thirteen West Seventh Street. And I'm here to talk about a hole in the street, twenty-five hundred block of West Seventh Street. Uh, this hole has been here for past three administrations, over twenty years. Uh, five years ago, the city came out and put a steel plate over the hole. Madam Deputy Mayor, I think you were there a couple of times to see this, and you told us that you, you were looking to it, but as, as now we still just have the steel plate. I have pictures if you, if I may.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Okay.
And all I wanna know is, will that eventually be fixed or is the steel plate all we get?
Um, Mr. Andrew Hayman, who's the Public Works Director. Um, we'll have someone from our area go down and look at this, and then we'll try to get some resolve for you.
Okay.
That's taken a long time. I know the steel plate was what was given at the time.
At the time, yeah.
But I can see even with that, it's starting to.
It's getting bigger, yes. Uh, the exact address will be twenty-five oh-nine West Seventh Street, it's right in front of that, that address.
Twenty-five oh-nine, West Second?
Seventh.
Seventh, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bridget Flynn? Bridget Flynn? Okay.
Good morning, Council and Deputy Mayor.
Good morning.
Um, many of you know me, and if you know I'm coming down here, I'm a little upset. Um, recently I've noticed an uptick of unhoused people coming into the neighborhood. The issue is that they're coming onto people's property. There, I've been harassed multiple times by individuals walking behind my house. Um, they're going up to the one store, which I've complained multiple times about the loitering. They don't do anything about the loitering on that corner of Tenth and Upland.
Excuse me, can I draw one sec, can you give me your address?
Nine-one-seven Upland Street.
All right.
Um, what I'm noticing is that they're going into the weeds that are back behind that church. Um, I've been talking with the people who are in charge of that property, the burned out church that's on Ninth Street. Um, he needs assistance. I do what I can from my side of the fence and I will go on the other side, 'cause I do have a key to get back there. But I need some help getting those weeds cut down, because they're hidden. And there's voices coming from back there, I'm not going crazy. Um, the other issue is at the corner of Ninth and Upland, the three hundred block of East Ninth Street, that property that started to collapse, they have a fence around it, but the fence is blocking the sidewalk. Kids are walking to school for community charter and they have to walk in Ninth Street. There's no, there's no crossing guard there, and there's no way to get by, 'cause the fence is blocking the sidewalk. It's been like that for forever now, and nothing's being done about the property. And there have been homeless people living in there too. Um, the issue that I addressed regarding the lot that wasn't mowed by the last, end of the last council meeting, when I got home, it had been mowed, so I appreciate for getting that done. What was the other, there was another thing, oh, trucks. I know at the last council meeting, we discussed the tractor trailers, it was passed in two thousand and twenty-two. Ninth Street is for business only. We should not have those trash trucks going down Ninth Street. They're also coming down Upland Street. People are getting lost, and since Upland Street was once Three-Twenty, they assume that it's still, it's residential. We shouldn't have tractor trailers coming down that street. And it was passed in two thousand and twenty-two, 'cause I looked, when the mayor said that it wasn't.
Okay.
It, that Route Nine, I mean Ninth Street is a business street, there should not be any commercial traffic besides people making deliveries.
So what we'll have to do is look at this, Mr. Hayman. Um, um, traffic, what's permissible on what streets, you know? Um, I, I think I remember something about commercial vehicles not being allowed to travel down certain streets, so we'll have to look at that. You had something to say or we're just gonna look at? Yes. Not to take your time.
I, I did my research, 'cause I was very annoyed after the last meeting.
We appreciate you bringing it back to our attention too.
Um, and then also, I, I need some, I need the Streets Department to come out. I mean, I, you know I've been working on that alley and I've gotten, I made a lot of progress, I just need more assistance. I'm only one person, and I have my own disability, so I need help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, oh.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, Council, um, just a comment about some of that. Uh, the, uh, I can't speak to the timing of a law that was passed preventing, uh, trucks from driving on, uh, Ninth Street. Um, that would be, uh, not be something that would, that would be pertaining to the Streets Department specifically. Uh, but, but, but commercial vehicles, I am aware, cannot be parked on city streets. But I think that's a, a separate matter from what we're, what's being addressed here.
And don't we have something where commercial, uh, tractor trailers are not supposed to travel down certain streets? I thought we had something like that on the books too.
I believe that's the case, there are stretches of certain streets in Chester where, uh, tractor trailers are not, uh, able to drive. Again, not something that I can comment and with much more specificity than that. Um, but, but again, they're, they should not be parked on, on residential streets for sure. Uh, there was a comment, I believe, about that as well.
Okay.
Um, that, that, there may be a misunderstanding about.
We're gonna get together and look into it, okay? Can you give me your phone number before you go?
And, yeah, ma'am, if, if I could meet with you before you leave as well, and I'd like to send some of my staff down to be able to assist you in your alleyway, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, that's it. Um, Council, are there any other comments or
Yes.
or notices or on events, anything you'd like to say?
Yes, so, um, Thanksgiving is getting ready to be, uh, Thanksgiving is coming up. And on eleven fifteen, we're going to be, uh, having a Thanksgiving giveaway of turkeys at Booker T. Washington Community Center. And if any senior would like to sign up to receive a turkey, please let me know. Um, and we are also working on a Thanksgiving, um, give back where there will not only be food provided for our community members, but you'll also get a meal. We're gonna have a DJ, and this is all, uh, being presented by, um, Nakobe Dean's Foundation. His mother came and joined us on this Saturday and she is pleased to work with the city of Chester. And so she said she wanted to give it a, a family-like feeling. And, and I can, um, definitely appreciate what she wants to bring here, and so, uh, the date will be forthcoming. Um, but for now, if there are seniors that need to sign up for turkeys, please let me know, because, um, I like to make sure that our seniors are taken care of. And then, uh, put your dancing shoes on for the Thanksgiving giveaway, it's gonna be awesome, as we have so many community partners that have joined us, um, this year. And so, um, they are all the announcements that I have right now.
How about you, uh, Councilman?
Councilwoman covered it all.
Okay, I believe, um, Chester East Side Ministries on eleven, on October eleventh, from twelve to three, they're having a free giveaway of produce, food, and fun and music. We all like to have fun and, and, and we all love music, so, uh, that's on October eleventh at the, um, Chester East Side Ministries, okay? And then there's also a a Fall Festival Block Party on the eleventh, there's a lot going on on the eleventh at six-thirty-four Sproul Street here in Chester. It's gonna be a flea market and, um, vendors, our host, celebrity host is gonna be Nocia Leach. And, uh, they'll have a puppet show, face painting crafts, performers, and carnival game. So it sounds like an activity of fun from twelve to four P.M. on Saturday, October the eleventh. And also, um, we're having Unframed Together Artists United Grand Opening, uh, Saturday, October eleventh, from four to seven, at twenty-three hundred West Fourth Street. That's at the marketplace. And they're having a, a grand opening, uh, for artists, it's called Unframed Together. And then, um, on October the fourth, no, not the fourth, the eleventh, there's also gonna be, uh, Supreme Hairstyles in Upland on eight-twenty, eight-sixty-five Upland Avenue. They're gonna be doing, I believe, free haircuts. This is under the Save Your Souls Diabetes Management and Prevention Screening Event. So, um, and that's October the eleventh. So you can, they can go, uh, Justin, on the, um, our page and get this information that you gave us.
Yes, uh, Deputy Mayor, so, uh, there is a handout with.
Kinda small.
Yeah, I try to fit as much as I can on this, you can take it with you. Um, but I do encourage everyone to download the Chester City Connect app. If you use the QR code using the camera on your phone, it's free. You can get notifications about all these events and more going on throughout the city. You can also go to the website, which is currently chestercity.com. And if you go to events, there's a calendar with all of the city, uh, government events as well as community events happening. So you can find this in multiple places. Uh, but I really do encourage you to download the new mobile app, that's gonna be the best and most timely place to find this information.
And, um, we're gonna have trunk of treats, I think it's a couple of those. I think the police is having a trunk of treat this year. And, um, all of this information is on the website, it's a lot. It's on the website, so I, I'd like to encourage you to go to the website. Or they can get a copy of this from downstairs, right?
Yes, ma'am, right now we have them, uh, on the table right outside of the council chambers to grab.
You can go right outside and get the, um, list of events. People are always saying, some people, not everybody, that there's nothing to do in Chester. I'm telling you, there's more than enough to do in Chester, there's a lot going on. We have a lot of interested, concerned people in Chester who are doing things to help make our community safe and, uh, a, a place where we can have fa, family fun and cleanups and all that. There's a lot to do here, so I'd just like to encourage you, tell your family and friends, there's a lot going on in Chester, and we all need to get involved. Is there anything else from anybody else? Okay, right after the meeting, um, Council is, we're gonna go into an executive session. We have some things that we'd like to discuss. So, but just for informational purpose, just to let you know that we are meeting right after this meeting. So all hearts and mind, minds clear? Okay. Meeting is adjourned.